Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Dover School Committee meeting of December 16 to order. We're going to jump around the agenda a little bit. Just in order to maximize the time, we have to talk about the budget while we're here. So I'm going to jump right down to the budget. And we'll come back to the other things at the end. I just wanted to actually give an overview because we do have a couple of new school committee members and we have two new warrant members, sort of how Dover School Committee approaches the budget. So we're here this morning mainly just to do a preview of the budget because the town requires us to submit numbers by the end of the year. And so about four years ago, we converted this to a morning meeting because we felt sympathy for the administration team who had to be out a third night in December. And we also felt we were a little fresher if we met in the morning. So I've always appreciated the school committee members for accommodating the morning schedule for all of us. Like I said, today is the rollout of the budget. What we do next is we'll gather questions and comments for the administrative team to take back. We have another evening meeting in January where we further discuss the budget. And then we have another meeting in March where we further discuss the budget. So this is just the beginning of the process. So nothing is really determined today. Our main goal today is to have some numbers to send off to the town. So given that, I would like them to turn over the budget to Mr. Bliss and his team. And just before that, just thank the administration team. I know how many hours and days and pieces of paper that have been created over this budget, and it's greatly appreciated. So I hope you know that we appreciate it.
Thank you. Good morning, Dover School Committee. Good morning, the viewing audience, and to so many of our members of our faculty. Thanks for being here this morning. And to Doug Lawrence, thank you for being here. It is a very busy time of year for everyone. This is our third school district budget to get out in about five weeks. So it's the first one lands right before Thanksgiving, but earlier always comes in right before for Chicering, right before the holiday break. So thank you very much. It's always an interesting task to begin budget season by building so early, as is required in our school system. So I thank Mrs. Fattori for the comments about this being our preliminary walkthrough of the budget. That's extremely helpful. Accompanying the budget, we do have a series of talking points. And to Dover School Committee members, you have a revised set that was left at your place this morning. So in the little binder clip is a revised set, bingo, of talking points. There are, in addition to that, in your packet, there are, in the binder clip packet, is a revised staffing enrollment report. And there's also a revised technology spreadsheet. Not revised, but it wasn't in your actual binder. So you want to go by that binder clip packet this morning. And anticipating that we would have some folks in the audience, we also have copies of the talking points as well. So I hope I have enough knowledge. If people can share, that'd be, I think, helpful. Thank you. And to Doug and Lauren, you already have those. Mrs. Powers, you already have yours too. I think for us.
So there are actually six pages of talking points. I do not intend to walk through all of them, but I do want to hit on about 75% of the talking points I think are important. I've heard from various members of faculty, newer school committee members, that it is sometimes helpful to do a little bit of walkthrough. So I'll try to be as quick as possible, but I think it's also important to do that walkthrough. So without further delay, what I'd like to do is get down to business of the talking points. To number four, we approach this budget building exercise with an acute appreciation for the town's finances, in full recognition of the need to provide level services in line with enrollment, and with an overriding desire shared among all stakeholders to maintain a superior educational experience for all Chicering students. The administrative team has, through this proposed budget, put our best foot forward with the hope and expectation of being able to attend to the lofty goals set by the superintendent and the administrative cabinet revolving around teaching and learning for the remainder of the school year. Number five, this proposed budget reflects a school that has witnessed 25% enrollment decline spanning the past seven years, and also reflects a 21% reduction in class sections. This reinforces that reductions enacted, while painful for many, are on par with the school's enrollment profile. This proposed budget is responsible to both shifting special education populations from Chicering to the middle school, as well as to the general shift in placements. Number seven, this proposed budget reflects a fully ratified educators contract spanning 2014 to 2017. In the advent of the recently ratified contract, we offer that the proposed budget reflects an average $3,898 salary increase for educators under the terms of the new contract. Number eight, this proposed budget reflects an estimated 16.4% increase in general education student transportation. The final terms of the new transportation contract will not likely be known until February of 2015. This proposed budget was built with a watchful eye on the Commonwealth's financial health. Although we are not largely dependent on Chapter 70 that flows from the state, said funds are certainly part of our overall financial model. Accordingly, Governor Patrick's plan to trim $329 million in spending from the $36.5 billion state budget first announced the week of November 10, and again referenced on November 20, caught our eye and deserves our attention. Such mid-year budget cuts are referred to as nine C cuts. In very early November, the Patrick administration held a briefing to disclose the gap, which they say is forming in part due to the likelihood of a legally required reduction in the income tax rate in January from 5.2% to 5.15%. In mid-October, the Patrick administration stuck by its fiscal 2015 revenue estimate while flagging areas where the state faced revenue exposure. The governor has the authority to reduce specific line items, and those germane to our operation include circuit breaker, regional transportation, and MECO. Reductions to Chapter 70 and municipal aid require special legislation, and the governor has proposed special legislation for such authorization. I will share that the MECO reduction has already taken effect, and we've already received notification from the state that that program has suffered a reduction, immediate reduction, for this current fiscal year. It's only, it amounts to several thousand dollars, but to a program that runs absolutely no margin of error, we, the three school districts, will have to absorb that from another part of the budget. So regional transportation obviously doesn't affect Chicering's budget. It affects the regional school district very much. So we're waiting on that as well. Number 10, this proposed budget maintains the assistant principal to current year-round 12-month status. However, it should be noted that inasmuch as administration has and will continue looking at all aspects of the school in light of declining enrollment, that position will also be reviewed in the next few weeks. The superintendent has a meeting planned with the sitting assistant principal to discuss contract terms. That meeting is planned for early January. Number 11, we'll skip. Number 12, the proposed, the total proposed FY '16 in-district operating budget for Chicering Elementary School excluding all out-of-district special education costs is $6,610,494. That is $76,595 or 1.5% decrease from fiscal year '15. The proposed, the total proposed FY '16 operating budget inclusive of in and out-of-district special education costs for students from Dover is $9,817,828. That is a $307,566 or 3.23% increase from fiscal year '15. This proposed budget includes the creation of an integrated pre-K program to be situated at Chicering. We envision one classroom with approximately 15 students. Half the population in the classroom can be special ed education identified. The total cost of the program is $189,000, and the offsetting tuition is estimated to be $20,000 for a net program cost of $169,000 for year one. For informational purposes, we currently, in this school year, provide services for preschool aid students from Dover as follows. Nine children receive peripheral services. Six children are enrolled in the Pre- and the Pine Hill Integrated Preschool Program, and fewer than five children are outplaced, be it in public or non-public preschool programs. We anticipate needing to provide preschool services for nine special ed identified Dover children for the 2015-'16 school year. By regulation, seven special ed identified children may be enrolled in the Chicering preschool. Possible students include, possible students include, three of the six Dover students currently enrolled at Pine Hill, and the other three children who matriculate to kindergarten in Chicering. And some number of children currently outplaced may enroll in a Chicering preschool. This would leave a few spots in the Chicering preschool for other special ed identified students from Dover, thereby reducing costs associated with educating said students elsewhere in terms of in-district education. This proposed budget is built on an estimated enrollment of 436 students, reflecting a net student in-and-out migration of 16 students. This is a fairly realistic enrollment projection, given that our actual net in-migration was 13 students for the 14-'15 school year. This encapsulating, encapsulating items two and three, we have migrated the costs associated with our TVI, our teacher for visually impaired, as well as other related services, to the middle school to reflect student migration to the middle school. Number four, this proposed budget reflects our continued enrollment decline by reducing the number of classroom sections from 25 to 23. There'll be one less section of Grade 1 and one of Grade 4 next year. And for informational purposes, we've broken out the breakdown by classes, by grade level. Number five, this proposed budget assumes enrollment of 52 kindergarten students. Forty-four of whom are age-eligible based on the 2013 census data. Five are anticipated kindergarten move-in registrations, and three students are enrolled in the Pre-K program at Pine Hill who may matriculate to kindergarten. We'll skip number six. Number seven, this proposed budget encapsulates expansion of the FLESS program to include 10 sections inclusive of kindergarten, Grade 1, and Grade 2. The teaching assignment for this position increased from .7 FTEs in this school year to a .8 FTE for next school year. The cost of this position in total for next year is $57,038. And before we get to number, number eight, this represents a real kind of programmatic shift, and we felt it important to embed this in the budget and obviously open it up at the chair's discretion for conversation about it. But with the chair's approval, I'd like to move through this and then field questions about that, if that's okay with you.
Let's move through everything and then go back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, absolutely. Yep. So this proposed budget reflects programmatic changes in the specials offered at Chicering. Technology and library media studies. Technology integration has blossomed at Chicering as a result of having a full-time teacher integrator on faculty. We have also benefited from the additional support district of a technology integrator for the past three years. Working concurrently on technology applications as well as on research in 21st century literacy skills, a library media specialist teacher has advanced children's capabilities through the Chicering Reporters class. This runs opposite band in the schedule, and the course teaches students how to do research, conduct interviews, synthesize information, and to be savvy consumers of technology. We would like to give more weight to these skills through the curriculum, and we want to ensure that we meet the CSTA standards as well as the Massachusetts Technology Standards, which are anticipated to be rolled out in May of 2015. We propose blending and elevating the roles of technology integrative teacher and library media specialist teacher to provide targeted instruction to all students in all grade levels in these critical 21st century domains. In order to implement this while simultaneously reducing specialists, we propose reducing technology integration by .2 FTEs, meaning only the school-based technology integrative teacher will remain, and the teaching load would increase by 13 sections every other week. Likewise, the library media specialist teacher would add 13 sections every other week. This model of coordinated alternating instruction is currently used in Grades 1 and 2, and we would like to extend that to all grades. The benefit to students is tremendous, and the alternating schedule allows the valuable technology integration that currently happens with teachers and students in the classroom to continue. With respect to physical education, Chicering offers PE twice a week to students in Grades 1 through 5 and once a week to students in kindergarten. In order to enact the aforementioned changes, we would need to reduce PE to one time per week, thereby reducing staffing from 1.8 to 1.0 FTEs in that area. Art and music are both proposed to remain as they currently are. Art to maintain at a 1.0 FTE, and music to maintain at 1.8 FTEs. When we took a look at those areas with respect to reductions in the number of sections, it is not an area where we can or would want to go near any kind of reduction. This proposed budget reflects six anticipated lane changes. Skipping number 10 and going to number 11, this proposed budget affords the school a total of 22 educational assistants for next school year, 13 assigned to the general education, and nine exclusively assigned to cover special education services legally stipulating students' IPs. This proposed budget includes Chicering's share of a system-wide fine arts department share. The modest cost share of $5,981 affords our school system K through 12 instructional leadership of the fine arts, comprised of visual and performing arts in terms of curriculum evaluation and all school exhibits, concerts, and other symposia. The specific cost-sharing arrangement and the instructional rationale for this position are explained in detail in the superintendent's memorandum dated November 12, 2014. We'll skip number 13. Number 14, this proposed budget includes $14,375 increase in technology hardware to include miscellaneous expenses deemed non-capital. And the school committee will recall, we had a conversation at one of our recent meetings about that portion of the capital request being embedded in the operating, and that's exactly what's happened.
Do we need that approval from warrant? Because that would scale. We have a new packet for us to approve when we get to that.
Number 15, this proposed budget includes longevity payments as follows. Two teachers at $3,000, one at $1,000, nine at $500, eight at $400, and five payments of $5,000 per the educator's contract. So that will probably want to come back. I think the chair would like to come back and speak to that. That's part of what they did for the new teacher's contract. Number 16, we can, and 17 we can skip. We'll go to facilities maintenance. This proposed budget provides for $64,597 for major building maintenance, and it's also reflective of heat and electricity cost increases that you can read in that section as well. Under the capital section, Chicering School proposed facilities capital projects for fiscal year '16 totaling $77,006, and technology capital requests totaling $19,075. And in the full budget binder in tab 5, there's a great deal of detail to back that up. With respect to out-of-district, I'd like to speak to point number two. This proposed budget also considers out-of-district expenses for regional-age students, Grade 6 through Age 22, as well as elementary-age students ages 3 through 5. While we project a 13.61% or $384,161 increase in this expense area, it is important to note the majority of those students are move-ins or otherwise new to Dover. What's more, the town of Dover has seen a correlation between increasing OOD expenses and circuit breaker reimbursement. To that point, circuit breaker reimbursement percentages were 60.7% in 2012, 71.3% in 2013, and 72% in 2014. In dollars, circuit breaker reimbursement increased from $536,501 in FY '14 to $716,197 in fiscal '15, and we will be at $901,603 next year based on anticipated 70% reimbursement rate, with $441,297 in Pre-K reimbursement, $229,769 in elementary reimbursements, and $630,530 in regional-age reimbursements. As of December 1, there are 20 regional-age students who are out-of-district placed from Dover. As of December 1, 2014, we project a $4520 positive variance for fiscal year '15 and regional OOD. At this time, we anticipate 24 regional-age out-of-district-place students from Dover in fiscal '16. And as of December 1, 2014, there are 11 elementary-age students. Budget was built on nine. And eight pre-K out-of-district, budget was built on four, placed students from Dover. Of the 11 students, five are in the fifth grade. We currently project a $176,241 negative variance in Pre-K through five, Pre-K through Grade 5 for fiscal '15. At this time, we anticipate six elementary out-of-district-place students and one pre-K out-of-district-place students from Dover in fiscal year '16. We'll skip number five and number six. This proposed budget assumes a 3% tuition increase and a 2.5% transportation increase for out-of-district-place students. So having said all that, and I apologize for the length that it takes, but I think it's important. That reflects an awful lot of data gathering and, and a lot of thinking and planning among the administrative cabinet and the administrators certainly. And I think it's fair to say, this is actually, you know, a union day, a union-recognized day in the nation, that we enjoy such an incredibly talented teaching faculty at Chicering. We say that, I think, at almost every Dover School Committee meeting. And program changes are never easy. I think one of the things we are really challenged with is looking at a very traditional school day model in terms of the number of hours the kids are in school, and we want so much for so many. And it literally comes down to, we want this, but we want this. We want two sections of that. We wish we could have three of that. And at some point, we are, not at some point, we operate within pretty strict parameters. And that's one of the things that we've struggled with, is how do we get and infuse and incubate all of the skills and all of the exposure and all of the things we want for all of our kids in Dover and Sherwood and into the region within the confines of this school day? And we have that real tough moral dilemma of things, some things have to sometimes fall out. And it's particularly, and I think personally painful, because we, for the past several years, have worked on a physical education and wellness curriculum campaign. It was, that was a challenging body of work for us because Pine Hill at the time offered, and largely continues to offer with some exceptions, one dose of physical education per one segment per week. And we, at Chicering for several years, have had two. So developing a curriculum was tough, and it was a credit to the teaching faculty that they were able to do that and have something that was unified, you know, K through 8. We're now challenged with the realization that how do we have our students at Chicering have a computer science experience? How do we, for students in Grades 3, 4, and 5, make sure that students have that experience too? And how do we fit that in to this school day without extending the school day? Which I'd love to do, but I think it would come at a very steep, a very steep price tag to do. So that's part of what we were wrestling with in developing and saying, we want all of this, and how do we get there, keeping the program quality what it is here at Chicering? And that's been one of our, one of our challenges. Don?
I think what I'd like to do is not jump right into the detail, but take one minute and look at the staffing enrollment report, and just from a global standpoint, make sure everyone's comfortable with how many sections. And then we'll go down into some of the details. We do need to go to the program change. We need to talk about the Pre-K classroom, the fine arts director. But I just want to make sure everyone is comfortable with where the enrollment class size works.
So we should take out? So in your budget binder, you want to go to your clipped version that I gave them this morning.
So one thing that the team added at the bottom of page one is average class size from 2008 to 2016. I think that's helpful to look at because we are staying in the same range, even though we are continuing unfortunately to reduce sections. I mean, I think their goal, I mean, we keep hoping we're going to stabilize, but the incoming kindergarten classes are just not appearing. And so we're just continuing to have to, to reduce. And I mean, Lauren and I have both been here when there used to be 30 sections, so no, you know, what Chicering, the kids that used to be here, we just don't have those right now. It kills us, but we do have a lot of new houses being built, and the hope is that we'll see some influx, but right now, you know, the numbers are looking really, really low. So I think administration has done the best. So just so you know, the numbers that you see in each grade, except for kindergarten, which does reflect the five move-ins, the other classes are just rowing down existing students.
We're assuming that no one's going anywhere.
We're assuming no one's going anywhere, and...
Or no one's being added.
Well, no, we do have a net migration.
But that is up in the top number. We didn't spread it per grade.
Because who knows?
Because who knows? So if you, if you tried to add up the numbers in each grade, you're not going to come to 436 because you have to add the 11 to the 436. So no, you know what I'm, so what I'm saying is there could be, if 11 kids come in, all these class sizes would be bigger.
You assume there's going to be 11 somewhere, but they're not...
But they're not in the numbers.
Given the class size is the only grade where that could possibly be, a section change would be what will be next year's fourth grade. If suddenly 10 kids came into that class, we would want five sections. That's impossible, but unlikely.
Good problem to have.
Right, and it's not likely that that would be. If we sprinkled 11 kids...
Then it's only going to make our class sizes look a little closer to...
A tiny bit. Yeah.
And just what's important is, so we worked, if you look at that, that sort of that broken down on your footnote, this year, the current year, we thought we would have a net, we'd call it a net migration factor of like 20, 20-year-old students, something like that. That did not materialize. So that's important to note, that we thought that over the migration, summer ins and outs and all that, we would land ultimately 20, all the ins and outs would land like 20 students higher. That didn't really, that didn't materialize. So we've taken a more conservative approach with looking at a net, a net migration variable, our net migration factor of 11 students, which is more in line with what we experienced.
So any comments or feedback just on how we built the sections for next year?
Because have we mandated, do we have a mandate?
We have a policy of 17 to 22 class sizes, yeah. So we try to stay within that. I don't know if we've ever, I think we've had one year where maybe we mandated 23 in class. We have allowed ourselves to go below.
So we added the 22s.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But we could, we would be able to react and go to five if we exceeded the 22 limit in Grade 4.
Cool. For sure.
It would cause budget variance, but we would, that would be our, you would be able to react and do that?
Yep. Absolutely. We, just for comparison purposes, so next year's kindergarten class in Dover is actually literally, I think Pine Hill's actually exceeding it by one kindergarten student in Dover. So we're, you know, I mean, the, the reality of it is, of course, that we have hundred-ish person kindergarten classes replacing much larger, Lauren, as you, as you know, and Don, having kids at the region. These, you know, 160, 70, 80 student classes are exiting the system and they're being replaced by 100 student classes. And that's the sort of ugly truth of it, right? So Sherwood is seeing a little more real estate transaction at the moment, or at least transactions resulting in student enrollments. So we have same-sized kindergarten classes coming from both towns next year, which is a harbinger of things to come. When you look at the way the regional agreement works, the regional agreement is based on a census apportionment formula. So Sherwood's looking at that futuristically, of course, as a clue, because there's always been a little, Dover's always been a little bit bigger.
A little bit more.
Yep. So Sherwood will own a bigger piece of the pie moving forward.
Okay. So if everyone is comfortable with that, what I'd like to move on then is probably the, any feedback you have on the changes in the program. Or did you have something more?
Well, I guess I was just trying to get back to apples and apples on the geography of where the teaching assistants are, be they called general ed or, I'm pleased to have this differentiation between the two. And now last year, no...
And now we're back. Now we're back split.
We're splitting on...
Yeah. Yeah, in the talking points, I think they're, they specifically said there's what, 13?
13 and 9.
And 9. So that, we just went back to splitting that out.
And the 9 includes the dedicated visual aid, or was that, was that in the count of 9 for the special education aid?
No, because that's just the gen...
Right, I knew that, but I didn't know if that was part of the numbers.
And that was a teacher, that position that's moved on. You'll see that reduction in the Pre-K teacher, the visual aid. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes. Why do you call it a Pre-K teacher?
No, 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 that's, you'll see that, and it's reflected in the special ed teacher reduction.
Okay.
We have seven, we have six next year.
So what we explained to the regional school committee was that the cost of that teacher has moved right into the regional budget, as it should, because the needs are shifting.
At one point I have, I'm sorry, and it's a little bit of a comment, because I know to your point, see, you know, we're trying to do the best we can with the confines of what we're working with. Two things. One, within the SAC committee that I sit on, we have talked about concerns about enrollment and how we can market the Dover school to new parents, existing parents that send their kids, you know, to private school and whatnot. And, you know, we've looked at, I mean, private schools literally send out flyers. I mean, we all, those of us that live in town, get them and whatnot. And we've talked about, can we do something like that? And talked about, obviously, the school ranking everyone knows about, but the success of our arts program, the success of our technology program, our class sizes, and try to do something to maybe generate a little bit of, I don't know, selling opportunity, to throw a little business term there. But what I look at is, one of the things that, where these private schools compete is in the arts and quiz ed and recess and time that they, the kids can unwind. We hear about wellness and obesity and eating right, and, you know, the thing that jumped out of me, you know, obviously, the class size and losing teachers or potentially losing teachers is horrible, but that's facing the reality of student numbers. So it can affect student numbers and maybe affect teacher numbers as well. But, you know, you look at going to one gym class a week, and other schools, I'm not talking about public, you know, but because they have the same issues we do, do more than, do more than one. They do like one a day, you know? And that's concerning. You know, the kids are overworked, everyone's overworked for various reasons, mandated and otherwise. But that does jump out to me, you know, it's just sort of, like I said, a comment, but it's a concern because, you know, you see the kids and we, they hear about all these things. the kids and we, they care about all these things they're supposed to do to take care of their body, but then the school is potentially reducing a reset, or a gym class. It's a mixed message. I don't know if a kindergartner is going to pick up on the mixed message, but the parents do.
That's a valid point.
Can I echo that? I am extremely concerned about that. I honestly, I, I find technology such a lower priority. We've talked so much about zones of regulation, about behavior. It's, it is common sense that what our children need is to move. They need to exercise the benefits they get from their social development in PE class, learning to take turns, learning to follow rules, learning to beat good sports. These are all skills that they take back to their classroom. Kids who sit all day long, I mean, we've reduced recess to what, 20 minutes a day? Is that what they're out? And by the time it's winter and you put on your coat and you put on this and there you are and you're out for like 10 minutes and it's time to line up and, you know, I, I would love to see, I mean, yes, technology is important, but honest to goodness, no kid is, these kids are infused with technology at their homes. They are going to have zero difficulty in understanding how to use technology. That is like the least of my concerns about our children. Let's try and be creative about wrapping it into classroom activities, classroom projects. They can learn these skills embedded. You can't embed PE unless you're a really good teacher. And I bet some of you do. You say, okay, everyone, we're standing up and doing 10 jumping jacks right now, but there's 10 jumping jacks per, you know, a minute. It's not the same as 40 minutes of, and let's face it, it's mostly boys, but there are certainly girls. Johnny, run around that gym, run! I mean, they're our kids. I know every single teacher out there is like, oh, thank God we have gym today because those three have got to run around and my life will be better. I, I really, really am concerned about wanting to once a week. It is, I just, I know there is a limit to, this is our day and we want to put a lot of things into that day. Boy, I keep peeing in here.
Just one dish, one further thought I had, and I do also share their view on this, as to limiting it to once a week, but was there any consideration to keeping it twice a week, but reducing the time to perhaps 30 minutes instead of, I don't know what it is now. And I've looked at other schools and some of the, that's the schedule at some of the other needed schools.
I would prefer to delve in more on that.
We consider all audience in terms of working with schedules. I've, I've worked with schedules where specialists have different allotted times. Functionally, it really, it's very difficult to make that work. I would, I would prefer to keep the whole event about to a reduced time.
Even the, the middle school, so we had a faculty meeting at the middle school a couple of weeks ago and the challenge success topic came up and, you know, it's a system-wide effort, it's DSCF supported, it's, it's a broad campaign. It's interesting because there's a recess, you know, recess is embedded in our elementary construct and a break is actually embedded in the high school schedule. And the middle school teachers very rightfully said, you know, what's, why don't we have a, just another built-in break for the, not, not another, just a built-in break for the middle school students. And they were, I, I think liberated to, to receive the message, you know, from the administrative team in that building to say, go for it, we'll just redo, we'll build in a health break, you know, that health and wellness break for our kids during the school day at the middle school. It defies logic as to why we have it in the elementary and then we have it at the high school and nothing in the middle school. So there are all kinds of different ways, I think also. Yeah, but your, your points are well, are well received. But we also know from a lot of the challenge success work that a lot of our students are engaged in physical activity, activities after school hours too, which helps to meet, to meet that. Not, 84% actually of our students are engaged in structured after school physical activities. And I can't say that 84% of our students are engaged in, you know, computer, in, in something that reaches those 21st century technology skills. This is...
I think, I mean, again, technology is important and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's any more or less than the next one. So unfortunately, you know, we want it all. But, you know, you think about the 84% that do sports after school, I mean, the, the school day is over, so you've kind of lost that benefit of burning off some energy while you're in, in the school day. And, you know, I look at the box program, you know, before school and the studies that came out and said, oh, you know, if you exercise for half an hour, 45 minutes before school, you can benefit from, you know, your school day because you're maybe at a more relaxed state, you know, you can look at your red, yellow, green and whatnot, you know? So I understand the kids are going to take out of school, which is also a little bit of an issue because they're overworked.
Overscheduled.
Overscheduled, thank you. But, you know, again, if you're, I think it does help internally during the school day if they are happy, often they kind of burn off more of that energy and then they can focus more inside the classrooms.
On the wellness, because we call it health and wellness now, how much of the PE time is actually physical activity and how much time is some of the other health curriculum? Where there are bits more classroom-based versus physical activity? That I don't know. Because I, I don't remember looking at it.
Wellness is being incorporated. There are four standards that we're consciously incorporating this year. There are also extras such as the BAT first aid program, the ventral aid and those sorts of things that are, that are in the overall program.
In, in, okay, in the PE time. So not all of the PE time is necessarily physical activity.
But the majority of it is.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of the wellness pieces are rolled into the, the lesson description and introduction. It's not going to sit down for class time.
And there's no doubt, I mean, the model, the model's wonderful. I mean, that's the part that's so sort of traumatizing a little bit is that it's a, it's, you know, to lock into a physical education class here, Chikering is, is, its structure is, it's academically sound, you know? I mean, there, it's not, it's not as if to suggest that it's sort of a willy-nilly you lock in and throw a bot. It's not. I mean, so there's no supposition of that at all. It's, it's literally this complete time paradigm of how do we make sure? And that's one thing we're also seeing in, as the kids move into middle school, there's a, there's a lot more, there's this vacuum of sort of the, some of the computer science background. And we often, and we then hear at the secondary level from folks saying, where's the engineering, computer science kind of premise to this whole school system? Not just Chikering, not just Pine Hill, the whole system? Where, you know, we have lots, lots of students who leave and move on to, you know, post-secondary studies in engineering and whatnot. And we haven't really, we can't say in a K-12 construct that we really have a program of studies to support that. In fact, we're shifting a lot of the course at the high school away from some industrial tech into pre-engineering with that idea on.
But I would also argue, I realize I am going completely against national standards and Common Core, but I don't care, I think they're wrong. I do. We do not need to train at elementary school what they're going to do in college. There's a reason they do it in college, it's because your brains are ready to do that when you're 19, 22. When you are five to 12, you need to get a good grounding in your basics. You need to grow, you need to physically grow, you need to socially grow, because you can't go be an engineer and work in a group if you have not learned to do that when you are five and six and 10 years old. So I just, as I said, I would argue that probably 95% of our students are using technology in all sorts of ways at home. I mean, I have seen kids do things, we did a library contest where, with Minecraft, where kids designed a library in Minecraft. Unbelievable. Now, this is not something they went to school, this is something that they all did all the ground with at home and play. This isn't every kid, it was a small group, but it was remarkable what they did. I am so unconcerned about Dover students having enough exposure to technology. There may be a few, but we are, we are an upper middle-class suburb whose parents are obsessed with giving their children technology. They are not obsessed with helping them learn how to run around in school. I would like to be obsessed with having them run around in school. And that's just my really, but, you know, maybe there are other people who would disagree with me, but I just, think about your issues around kids with behavior. I, I, I just let them play while they can play. They're kids. My man for the day.
What's the step on this particular issue? This is something that is voted as a group and it's a majority vote, is this, I don't...
Yeah, I don't think we would necessarily take any votes today. Because this is, I would...
And is this actually our decision? I mean, this is really...
Well, it's curriculum-based, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be...
It ties directly to the budget. So it doesn't extend it.
It's more, it's more to do with timing in the schedule, right? Reducing, you know, increasing, picking up a little bit more in the other areas and reducing than it is financially, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's not, there's no financial, there's no being...
So it's, it's just how do you, you know, put enough, fill enough places with everything.
How do we achieve multiple ends?
There have been a lot of parents, I know who approached Steve, who want to do more of this stuff in school and have been willing to pay them money. And so I think that's where some of this came from. There are parents out there who feel like we're lacking in that.
Computer science.
Computer science, right.
It's including, I think, the logic behind it.
What I, what I think that we don't have a good grasp on is what would be taught. I mean, we've gotten just a little bit, but a little bit more of what the curriculum would be.
We're actually looking at computer science K-12 and it's an international movement and the state of Massachusetts is leading the nation, which is usually what we do with the Common Core. But it's looking at computational thinking, it's looking at computing practice and programming. And there are kindergartners, you see the B-bots here, Steve Hart is already doing that with kids. It's looking at how we, how we interact and collaborate. So that curriculum is, has been developed by code.org and it's something that Mr. Hart was trained on at the beginning of December. The technology integration specialist at Pine Hill has already been trained and is already integrating those lessons K to five. So what we're looking for is that transition from fifth to sixth grade for our students and we're finding that Chikering doesn't have that experience that's needed to transition to the middle school in the areas of coding and computational, computing and thinking. Because they do not have grades three, four, and five tech instruction in computer science. There's tech integration that happens here, it's beautifully done, it's wonderful, I mean, I would never want to negate that. It's not about the devices, it's about coding, it's about using code.org, Scratch, Logo, all of those developed computer software programs that will develop the next computer science engineers, engineers in our environment. And it's developing that brain, much like we develop foreign languages, this is developing that part of students' brains. But I would argue, now, this is a whole, using your own kids as an example, which I realize is quite completely not transferable to the rest of the world, but I would argue, my son came home from hour of code, loved it, mom, look what I'm doing, de, 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 totally excited to learn Scratch with his dad, I mean, he's thrilled, assuming he's never done it before. He picked it up like that. I mean, there's a lot of things that, again, you're all educators, you know, let's go back to the olden days when we learned cursive. Well, you can teach it in second grade, but it takes a lot longer, or you could teach it in third grade and all of a sudden they all get it fast because there's just developed that much more. And yes, there's benefits, you know, we can teach algebraic thinking starting in early age and when we do algebra, they kind of have it, but do we need to make sure they know algebra? Well, it will kill them if they learn it in seventh and eighth grade when their brains are actually going to get it that much faster. So I really, I don't want to negate the importance, but I, for me, I'd weigh it to E.
I think we're, the three of us are saying, we agree that we have the need for technology, we can, we find it somewhere else.
I don't, I wouldn't go that far.
All right, but that's where I'd put my time.
I'm in the middle there. I mean, you know, I think introducing all these things is, at a young age, is actually to generate interest and find out where your focus is and what kids like to do and, you know, you want them to touch on everything. I think that's important. So I'm not, I'm not here saying I'm up for one or the other. I mean, I'm here to say, I just think we need to not lose it, but I don't, fortunately, I'm not sitting at the seat to say, you know, this is how the schedule works, but I, I don't want to lose it because it's hard to get things back. And, but I also, I'm not here saying that one thing is more important than the other because I think everything's important.
Can I, can I just ask a clarification question? Because this I didn't really fully understand. So we have our full-time teacher integrator on faculty. So with this change, what I didn't understand...
Was the point to a reduction?
Yes.
Because there's a district that will lose, she won't be, that, that position won't be assigned to Chikering.
So Diane wouldn't come work?
Diane, right, wouldn't be touched, 20% of Diane Papadopoulos's role wouldn't be included at Chikering. There is an intent to redefine that 20% through some much-needed work at the region.
Okay.
So in terms of the association and whatnot, that, that position remains, it's our hope, I have to still propose all this from the regional school committee, but it's the hope that that position remains full, it's just that that integration piece doesn't touch Chikering.
So then we would rely on, just to name names, but we would rely on using the technology integrator teacher, which is that position is Steve Hart and Cheryl Chase as the librarian media specialist. Those two positions would work kind of as a team, would they also be working with faculty, kind of looking at the whole?
They do. And that's exactly...
So, almost what they're doing now, but kind of a little more...
A little more formal.
Yeah.
And making sure that it's, it's reaching all children, because right now only a few people do Chikering reporters. And there's value to that, that with this change, all students would benefit from that exposure.
And that's, by the way, to Kristin, to your point, that's exactly the model in place at Pine Hill. So Pine Hill several years ago had a 1.0 tech integrator that for various reasons we had to reduce to 0.8. So there's a 0.8 technology teacher integrator with an offset of an incredibly talented librarian. Interesting. So that's a 0.8 with a slightly smaller elementary school. Chikering would be at a 1.0 with an equally talented and incredible library teacher. So that's interesting, so we're beginning to kind of see the models that will then logically feed into the middle school for a six through 12 scoop on the other end.
Laura, did you have some? I just want to say that we, we share your concerns about PE, especially with a high investment in wellness, both in the physical and the emotional realms. We feel that's really important to keep. We are, I think it's important to, to share that we are really in the midst of a process of exploring what does technology and all these 21st century skills, what does that look like? There's an incredible amount of teaching and learning going on in that realm. We are in the process of documenting exactly what that looks like, exactly where it does fit into the curriculum, where it can fit into the curriculum, and how we make that happen. Is it through classroom experiences? Is it in the lab? And I just think it's important to share that we are in the process of doing that. And that's, that's, that's yet to be decided in terms of what that looks like. And I'm just saying that because I think it's possible to perhaps have our cake and eat it too. But we do need to clearly define, so for example, looking at technology standards, they expect in K to two, kids will be creating technical presentations. So that's a pretty high standard. Can we make that happen? I have no doubt that we can, you know? It's, part of it is what does that model look like?
One of my, one of the things that I'm thinking of going forward is as we continue to roll out the world language, the foreign language, how, and then we're going to take chunks of time out of those next grades. Like it's been easier, I think, where we are now. How, I think we should think a little bit about that and see how that's going to come in that time, how it plays into where we are now, so we don't make big changes now and then next year when we realize we've got to take 120 minutes for world language, where it's going to come from. So I do think we probably should think, I just, it just dawned on me that, that's a big chunk of time that we, we're taking it year by year now, like now, but, and it's been easy in the younger grades, I'm not so sure how it's going to work in the older grades. And I think that's where the overlay, some of this overlay, so maybe some of the world language is done in a, in a computer, you're learning it in that language, in Spanish. I mean, I think the hope was that some of that world language time would be in a special or in the classroom and not added time.
Accidentally added, yeah.
But in a larger sense, the way to make this happen is to integrate and not have silos of content areas. And we started that work this year throughout professional development, our PLCs, integrating empowering writers and social studies. And there will be more and more of that because I think it's best for the students, but also it just allows for more of these things to happen.
There is conversation among, at the regional level, the headmaster at the middle school's beginning to engage the foreign language to Marvin Chair equivalent at the middle school so that we begin, to Dawn's point, of making sure that everything is laid out well, so that when fifth graders from Chikering roll into the middle school... so that when fifth graders from Chikering roll into the middle school, that we are curricularly aligned in the area of foreign language to receive them and to offer a curriculum that's commensurate with their background, which will have been multiple years of many doses, you know, of foreign language. So Callie Egan, who fills that role at the middle school, is eager to begin, because really, next year we'll have K-1, 2. It's not, it's in a couple of years, those kids will roll into the middle school. It's our hope that it rocks the world of the Spanish curriculum at the middle school, that's the hope, right? Because you would hope that six years of Spanish exposure does not just sort of allow the curriculum to remain static, um, at the middle school. What a shame, right? So we are beginning to queue up for that longitudinally, uh, with our leadership team.
Laura, I'm sure you guys have thought of this, um, but it, have you also looked at, and I am a big proponent of how strong the science curriculum here at Chikering is, but, you know, we talk STEM, science, technology, engineering, and that's the, yeah. You know, that certainly seems like a place to look at, gosh, do we have any units that overlap? That, you know, could we pull something and throw engineering at the logical place to put it within that model? So you're shaking it, like, yeah, we are looking at that, and maybe that's where we can find time, so.
And the engineering curriculum is already stated for the state of Massachusetts, so we need to do that work here at Chikering to assure that we're meeting the engineering standards of that Massachusetts framework. The, the proposal here is to add computer science, which is different.
Okay, I'm just wondering, you know, it kind of fits in that STEM block.
It does.
So I think what I don't, I want to be able to move on and cover everything, but I think, um, we've heard a lot of comments, so maybe we can continue to digest what we have and we'll come back, you know, in the third week of January and see where we stand. I don't, I, just thinking it through, I, I think we're okay submitting this budget as is, because we can still maneuver within the numbers.
Yeah.
So that's not critical to that decision.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Um, so it's an attempt of a position, is that?
It is, but then if we do keep that, and there's going to be some reductions other places potentially.
Okay.
I mean.
So with the budget, I mean, it looks like a huge part of it is, um, you know, the out-of-district transportation and tuition and whatnot. Um, so it looks like our budget has decreased, um, but the overall expenses and the out-of-district stuff has increased. And we have the circuit breakers, which I think goes back to the town, right? Um, is there any way to get a little bit more creative on, you know, how we can reduce some of the out-of-district costs? I mean, I know we're doing the kindergarten, or the, um, the pre-k, sorry. Um, but, you know, the budget is going down, which is never a good thing to see, but I understand what it's kind of, the environment we're in. But is there any other areas we can think about to try to make it so we're not looking at necessarily solid future positions or anything like that? Not because of the town, but just because of money reasons?
So special educate, the administrative team and more, more on the ground level, certainly the, the teaching faculty at Chikering have done a yeoman's task of really trying to work with, we've really been inundated, uh, with, with a number of students who have either been identified or moved to Dover, uh, so that's just a statistical reality for us. And of late, um, I think that the, the teaching faculty may always do a good job, but in particular, there's an earnest effort to really keep kids in district.
Right.
And you can tell when you spend time in the building, if you look at the Strategic Learning Center, or if you look at some of the deployment of educational assistance, the restructuring of educational assistance, tier one, two, three, with a cadre of, of skills as one moves up into that, in that tertiary model. So, uh, EAs at tier three are expected to be degreed with a, with a requisite skill base to be able to meet kids' needs. So that, some of those things, and those aren't easily accomplished, that was re, that was maneuvering an entirely new contract. Um, the Strategic Learning Center is a model of, of success. Uh, because I think we would only have to look at, at some of the, the students who are serviced, and that's just one aspect of Chikering, to know that it, it wouldn't take much for some of the students to need to have those services delivered at Starling. Um, so I, I think there actually has been a considerable amount, considering the escalation and the, in the, the need base and the volume of students.
So, I mean, I think what, Jack, I think what you're saying is, through some of these improvements, obviously there's extreme cases that we probably need to support as going elsewhere. Um, but, you know, we've, the ones on the fringes, we've made it so they can come here and receive those services as opposed to potentially having to go to a different location, is that correct?
And only in extraordinary cases. I mean, have we literally sat down with the admin, admin team for Chikering, with Terry in position as the director, and Marla certainly, to say, have we exhausted every option? I mean, have we looked at different models, have we looked at different placements, have we looked at modifying one school day? I mean, there are all kinds of discussions now that are happening that, not to say they once didn't, but they're certainly happening with, um, I think, a heightened richness.
Yeah, I mean, it's a third of the, the budget tied up in this area.
But to the point, I think the number would have been much higher had we done nothing and not reacted, so.
And, and to your point, Henry, I, I will share that I was at an accept, I sit on the accept board of directors, representing your committee and the other two school committees that, that hire me. And, uh, it's interesting, so I was at a board of directors meeting, an accept meeting last week, and at the end of the meeting, one of the area superintendents in a very analogous school district, very much like ours, said, could I just use this as an opportunity to ask, what, are people just being hammered by special education, both by the, the volume and the complexity? And everyone just nodded and they went right around the room, and six of the superintendents have to go back to their FinComs this year with greater than a half a million dollar request.
Oh.
For mid-year, um, costs that have, that were not budgeted, that were not anticipated. So that's six superintendents of the accept collaborators who are going to have to go back to their towns this mid-year now.
Which is a pretty comparable community.
Yeah, and who just said, you know, we're at a loss for what to do, because some of them too have small cohorts of kids like, like, like we have. And, um, you know, I thankfully, due to the responsible nature that we budget in Dover and the mindfulness, the special ed reorg, the talented staff, the dedication, but the, I think the transparency and the collaboration has allowed us to, relative terms, land okay, um, given what's going on in the whole landscape of special education. I was mesmerized at the meeting, I was literally one of the only ones who said, you know, we're seeing the same, we're seeing the same thing, uh, but we're not going to go down to Dover, um, in that kind of a, um, overt way.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, you know, one has a crystal ball, but in terms of concerns about the state budget, I know Christine, you've said that circuit breakers have been going up in terms of reimbursement as the economy's gotten stronger. Are we going to be looking at with mandatory tax decrease, could we be looking at less circuit breaker reimbursement, or who the hell knows?
Circuit breaker, what is on the table for the nine C cuts? However, in my discussion with, uh, DEFC, um, it's really, they, they believe we're going to be held harmless for the 70% reimbursement, it's the exceptional, extraordinary cases, um, which we, we don't apply for, that will be affected.
That's a good, good point.
That's where you're asking for an exception to the rule?
Right.
Okay.
An extraordinary mile for under, extraordinary, and some of those superintendents that I just mentioned literally said, well, it's okay, because I'm going to be applying for extraordinary relief, and everyone sort of, those of us who are kind of, and it's sort of chuckled and said, that's exactly what's on the table, is the extraordinary relief provision, that's going to be first on. But right before Thanksgiving, I had occasion to see Denise Garlick at a school event, middle school, and representative Garlick, representing Dover. I said, Denise, we're, we're sort of panicked a bit, you know, what could, and she said, Steve, just, just be patient. Um, you know, we, the legislators haven't had a chance to weigh in on all of this yet. And, but then literally a couple of days later, I received the, the cut letter from MEKO. I mean, so it was kind of like, we had to call Monique and say, your budget's been cut by about a thousand bucks. Um, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but it is, it's destimated professional development and supplies for the MEKO program, that's what it did.
Now, as far as 16 is concerned, we have a new governor coming in, and who knows, you know?
All right.
But we also have the legislature that's approved the 70%, so.
What I'd like to do, yeah, is.
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to make a point when you were asking about are there things we can do to keep students in district? I do see the preschool program in the building as being a big part of that, because what we get a chance to do is to, for students who come into us at age three with special needs, we get three years to work with those students, to get to know those students and their needs, so that they're not coming into kindergarten unknown to Chikering. Um, their needs being unknown. So I see the preschool as a really big step in helping to plan and help children progress to be more successful in the kindergarten environment here.
And I would agree with that a hundred percent, I mean, I think it's great that we're doing it, and, um, I think it's going to be, hopefully, a step in the right direction to, that's what I mean, like, trying to do things that we can, you know, look at the numbers, it's humongous, and I, it's great that all these services are provided, but if there's more that we can do to contain some of that.
Well, before, I've, so yeah, I've been in school, it's my fifth year, so five years ago is when we started the, um, sort of the special classroom here. And had we not done that, now it's blossomed into the Strategic Learning Center, I think there's multiple classrooms around here that we have been creative about to keep, um, students in as much as we can, uh, because the, the volume has gone up. So we, although we're seeing our out-of-district go up, I think those, I think some of them are large dollar cases that, um, we have no choice.
Yep.
And so that's driving it a little bit, but we're keeping out all the stuff that, um, you know, could continue to make it grow. But gives us more of a fighting chance to keep them in district, I think, going forward.
So I know that, um, Terry did a great job of presenting the, uh, integrated pre-k in our October meeting. Even if you have a little more structure that you want, okay, great.
What would be the average cost that the pre-k outplaces, is it, is that, is that a 40K number?
So, um, typically, our collaborative programs are the, are the most cost-effective, and they range between 40 and 50,000. And that doesn't include transportation.
That's pre-k.
That's pre-k.
We've been fortunate that we'd be able to place some of our children in Pine Hill at a little more favorable rate than that, which is what has really kept our budget. I mean, you see that when you pay warrants, that's it, yeah.
I don't remember the number, but I got it.
Because we know people over that.
Yeah, we're averaging, we're just, you know, a student around 15, but then we have, we have a number of students that require related services as well and other things that we had to include. Um, so it's, it's very cost-effective, the difficulty is Pine Hill is at capacity.
We have one or two classrooms.
We have one, one of the, there's two classrooms, one is only a half-day program.
Okay.
So, um, there are two classrooms there. But Pine Hill is at capacity, and the difficulty is that the preschool students keep coming in. And this is not unique to Dover, um, across the state, the numbers of preschool students coming in with needs has grown, um, at a much, um, higher rate than other grade levels. So that's part of the big picture for Dover, um, is that Pine Hill can only take so many students beyond that, and then you have to look to out-of-district programs for those students. Um, so there are six students as of right now at Pine Hill, um, from Dover, um, that, um, they have related service needs as well. Um, there are five additional students that are either in process of being evaluated or have been referred to us by early intervention, letting us know that they will be turning three this school year. So, um, one of those students has already been placed out of district. Um, and we have other students that are being evaluated to determine if they're going to be in need of services as what, as well. Um, I just spoke a few minutes ago that, you know, the range for our collaborative programs are 40 to 50,000 dollars, and the lowest average, um, for transportation is 9,000, although that's changed, but we'll talk about that separately. Um, and once the students come in, if they come into us at age three, we are, we have those students in preschool for three years. So wherever they are, whatever the tuition cost is, that's likely to be the case for three years, if there's not a preschool program here, I have to maintain them wherever they are for three years. As I said, you know, if they come into us here, we have the opportunity to intervene for those three years to help them work on, um, the skills that we want them to enter kindergarten with. We have, at this time, there were 24 Dover, um, families that were interested in tuitioning their students into the program. So we're in the process of getting information out to families about, um, lottery process and things like that.
How much is supposed to be in the Dover Mothers Association, I think?
Yes.
Yes. It's funny, you know, a little PR's going on, a little marketing.
So I also have, um, some financial information that was updated, um, since the last time that we presented the information. Coupled things, um, six students currently at Pine Hill, so that number has changed, the tuition being paid to Pine Hill has changed. Um, and again, five students projected new. Um, and so we used the 40,000 dollar range, which is the lower, lowest of the range for out-of-district programs, um, transportation costs. And then cost for summer programming, because that is a separate, um, when you're out of district, a separate cost for summer programming. So in district, we also made a couple of changes. We have a teacher's salary, when I presented the information the first time, it included three educational assistants. The truth is, one of those educational assistants, the cost is going to be borne by Dover, whether or not we open a preschool. So we did not include it here, because it is really not a cost that's incurred by determining that we're going to start a preschool. We are going to have to fund that one to fund an educational assistant for that student, wherever that student is. So we took that out of the mix here, because it's not really an operating cost to preschool.
Right, it's just.
It's a one-to-one aid.
Correct, yes.
If little Johnny is in the preschool, we have that cost, and little Johnny moves out.
Yes.
It's included in your out-of-district currently.
Right, that's supposed to, okay, so that exists today, it's part of the tuition plus services that we're already paying.
Right, right, so the, the previous version of this gave the impression that that was additional cost to operating a preschool, it's not. So that, um, this indicates two educational assistants for that. Um, supplies, materials, this is all about startups, so outputting a classroom from scratch, and it's a one-year cost there. Total in-district cost would be 155 to 19. Um, tuition revenue, if six students pay tuition to the program at this lowest number of days, which is three days per week, it'll be a 20,000 dollar, um, revenue. So net in-district cost for the program would be 135 to 19 for the first year. And then for, um, so that's for year one, for, for the following years, it would not include the 12,000 dollar startup, um, materials and things. So, um, in-district versus out-of-year, out-of-district for year one, it's a savings of 244,281 dollars. After that one-time startup cost, it's a saving of 256, 281 per year.
It goes into our in-district numbers, which is reflecting of that one and a half percent decrease.
Right, it's already in there.
It's in there.
Correct.
And it's also reduced what has been a 3.2% increase, it would have been that much.
Yeah, we're not, we're not seeing, we're not, yeah, we're not seeing all of that decrease, because they are just coming to us, so it wasn't like we were able to take them up out.
True.
Okay, so that's what would have.
It would have been.
It would have been.
I just think we're going to have to be really creative in how we, um, not sell it, but how we explain this to the town, to really show the work that's been done to minimize that, mitigate the out-of-district number.
So basically, our budget would have gone up by 379,000.
Right.
Some of those kids are already in there, not very many though, probably only three.
Right, right.
So eight of those would be increases there are out of districts on top of what we already saw, if we did not create the preschool.
Right, so it gets to Henry's point, how do we reduce the out-of-district?
Except five of these at Pine Hill, I thought, were coming into our kindergarten.
Three.
Three, there's, there's six.
Yeah.
Three of the six will be kindergarten. Okay, so we just have to back that number out, because that would not be in our budget, do you know what I'm saying?
Right, those, exactly, yes.
We'd have to scrub the number.
Right, right, right. And the five, um, you know, it's not, oh, could they still be evaluated? So this is worst-case scenario, some of them, we don't know if they're needful placing or if they just need to come in for drop-in or such. So this is showing the worst-case scenario, we don't know exactly what's going to happen to those five kids.
So let me ask a question on the revenue base. Um, so we have, I presume that these teachers are full-time, these are, they're going to be, these are full-day teaching sessions. And the revenue assumptions, sounds like we, those were families opting for part-time, um, schedules, is that, is it?
Correct, so what, what we wanted to do is I didn't, because we're estimating here what the families may want for services, they can opt for three, four, or five mornings per week, and then there's an additional charge if your child is four or older, you can opt for afternoon programs as well. This model, I didn't want to overestimate what the revenue could be, it could be more than that. It could be probably the very base, would be the 20,000.
And from a budgetary perspective, it, right now, it's all included in the general fund, but at some point, like, for example, at the Pine Hill, we actually have pulled out from the general fund two of the aides that support the program, and it's now being charged to the revolving fund.
Because that's where the revenue is going to go.
Correct.
So I guess, um, it, it, it's assuming that a lot of these kids that are non-special needs children are. So I guess it's assuming that a lot of these kids that are non-special needs children are part-time, not in the afternoon. Do we need all those aides in the afternoon? I mean, I guess in thinking of volume, so if you've got, you're assuming three, I guess, two days not an option to make it a full-day revenue or a full-week revenue model. So you're not going to be at capacity if you're assuming that now half of the class is only going to be there for three days? And is there any way to make it a more, to get up to full capacity? And has that been considered?
Yes, so one of the things that Pine Hill has done for years is, once parents do register their children and choose which days of the week, how many days, we take a very close look at. We do a spreadsheet of each day, morning and afternoon, how many children. We will call parents and say, we do have openings on Tuesday, Thursday, mornings right now. If you, you know, you might have wanted a three or four day, but would you be interested in two days? We have openings in the afternoons. Are you interested in after, so we do do that. We try to maximize the number of students.
All the children that are in there, though, on sort of IP plans, stay the full day? So that, that's, they're there.
That's an option, yeah. Not all of them do, but I would say the majority.
I got the plan, sort of. Oh, Terry, if it, we got to the point where, for whatever reason, we had space for more special needs kids than were in Dover, would we take children from other towns?
It's a conversation that we could have.
Well, it's 40 grand, I think.
Well, we also think, right now, we potentially don't even have enough spaces for all the potential Dover kids.
I think that you're going to get to capacity fairly quickly, given the numbers that early intervention is projecting. We'll be turning three in the next year or just over a year. I think that there's not going to be a lot of extra.
So we're looking, we're looking at a classroom of 15, and it's just the formula, so only half of those can be-
Correct, so in order for it to be considered an integrated preschool program, you're supposed to keep that 50-50 ratio. There will be times when you start with a 50-50 ratio, another student moves into town or is identified. Your ratio can be off a little bit. DESE will give a waiver if it's a temporary situation, so partway through the year, an unexpected student moves into town, things like that. But that's the goal, a 50-50 ratio.
So we have eight potentials, a class of 15, so we really would only have seven legally, I mean theoretically in there. So that's where we are right now, and why we're now at the point of view. For Henry, we've actually been talking about this. This is the third year that this has come on, but this is the first year that we've had, like, stable numbers that we felt like we could support it. And as you can see, I mean, last year, the way the numbers turned out, potentially, we could have, but we didn't know that at the time. So this is sort of something that has been talked about, talked about, and now it's come to where we're here. And-
And we clearly lose space.
And Terry, I think you can share that we, there's been a lot of, Terry's been getting information that there's even more coming down the pipe, which gives us that this is going to be-
Sustainable.
Sustainable, yeah.
At the last school committee, I think you mentioned that the numbers may warrant even more than one preschool class. I think that's something that we should think about. And if we're trying to keep out-of-district costs down, and we can provide services here and have the space, it's something to consider.
One thing we wanted to throw out to Warren is that we will need to establish a revolving fund for this tuition. So we'd like guidance from you guys as to how. Okay. And Chris, I mean, Chris has a lot of information on that, too, but I think we'd like to know where you'd like to go with that.
It's different statutory.
And then the last thing that you have here is some tuition comparisons. I included some information in the last packet. Since then, I've gotten a little bit of updated information. So we included a range of tuitions from three, excuse me, four different private preschools in town, in Dover and one Sherburne, as well as some area tuitions from public schools. And I think the last one may have fallen off the page. It's four different public schools, and those are the ranges. Our tuitions that are currently set are within the ranges for the public preschool programs. But each year, we can discuss whether or not the school committee feels that we should adjust those preschool tuitions. So I provided this information just for comparison.
And can you say, are you getting sufficient interest from non-special needs families?
24 families have expressed an interest, yes.
Have they gone as far as putting their names in?
Yes.
Great.
Their information has all been given to the special education office, and they're all being-
Okay, great. So it looks like we should be able to, we will have more than a ten-type.
What would afternoon tuition rates be? Is that an hourly rate or something?
The current rate that's been used at Pine Hill is a daily rate. It's a cost per day.
Do you have, do you know what percentage of parents elect to do some mix of combination of afternoon?
It's a complete estimate. I would say only four-year-olds are eligible. I'd say it's 50% or less of the parents that are opting for afternoons.
I was going to say, I remember from our preschool days, about half the kids would stay. And you can pick certain days, so you might have one long day than the other days. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Let's hit on the Fine Arts Director, Chair. I think I sent that packet of information to you earlier last week, so you had time to read it, and it comes with this big packet. If any discussion, I mean, we're the third committee to actually talk about this subject. And I don't know, Steve, if you want to give us an analysis of where you stand with the other two committees, because it would take three of us, really.
To make it, takes three to tango. So essentially, those who have hits at the region know that we have, at the high school, we have department chairs. And department chairs by contract are the only teaching position that has an evaluative capacity. So that's an important sort of proviso. So department chairs at the high school contribute to the evaluation process. So you'll also recall that several years ago, it was actually our performing arts teachers first, followed by our visual arts teachers, who approached me in my role as assistant superintendent at the time to begin to think about our program in a K-12 construct. This goes back a few years ago. And I think a lot of that was born of the fact that for some of the teachers, particularly when you look at, like, Kelly Hodg, who's the music teacher at Pine Hill, she's on an island, you know, she's an isolate. So it's very talented, great, great person. But bringing her together with her colleagues at Chicaring and then morphing that into the region, it became this really wonderful model of a K-12 look at programs. It was first the music teachers, and then a year later, it was the fine art, it was the visual arts teachers who approached me and said, why do they get to do that, we don't get to do that? We'd like to come together, too. So it had the same effect. All of these teachers began to be able to come together on all the PD time and look at what is the visual art? What is the performing arts experience for DS student? Absent of that kind of a macro view, it's quite insular, you know? And sixth-grade teachers of the fine arts, both visual and performing, at the sixth grade have kids coming at them, you know, every fall from Dover and Sherburne, what was then very different experiences. Not to suggest that everything should be cookie cutter, but it was interesting that if you talked to Marilyn Dowd as the sixth-grade music teacher, she would have really had not a lot of visibility at all into even the musical pieces or the techniques or even the style of musical learning that really went into the elementary experience. Well, we're at the point where we haven't developed curriculum for the secondary level. We're beginning to look at curriculum development for the ensembles, which is sort of the next body of work. But there's an enormous amount of work yet to be done, and it should be done by dynamic capacity. And the only position at the region that he has anything beyond a department chair of the high school, we have one position, it's the Health and Wellness Coordinator, and Dara Johnson, she's a 6 through 12. So she's the only one so far. So we have a bunch of people, 912, one person, 612, in that department chair role. We're looking to be, in just the same way these folks came to us several years ago, we're trying to look at this holistically in terms of the entire K-12 DS experience and say, if we have a fine arts department chair spanning K through 12, that person, regardless of the district, from once he or she comes. I mean, theoretically, it could be a fine arts teacher from Chicaring could apply for that and get that job. This is cutting edge. This could be the first time that we have an elementary teacher as a department chair, which is very, very cool to contemplate. And so this is cutting edge for us, and it's consistent. And some folks in the other committees have said, well, why aren't we doing this with English and math and science and everything? I said, well, that's great, and if we can, over time, look at that. But we're trying to sync this up with where we are sort of curriculally, where there's momentum right now to do that, and also by virtue of the numbers. So we know that, we know there's a huge commitment to the arts in our two communities. And how do we improve that fine arts experience for our students, K through 12? What this does is essentially, now, keep in mind, at the high school, a department chair teaches 80% and has 20% release time. So that 20% release time is baked into the compensation models of 1.0, 80% teaching, 20% release.
But then they also get a stipend.
They also have a stipend. So we've costed out the whole model. So a department chair position, regardless of the department, costs about $24,000, something. By the time you add release time and the stipend, that position has really grown over time. I mean, it's not just so we have somebody else doing evaluations. I mean, it's constant looking at the curriculum in terms of the fine arts. It's looking at how can we broker K through 12 symposia, exhibits, and bringing the arts together in a more cohesive way? And some folks in the other committees have said, well, won't that just happen naturally? Like, do we have to, you know, in a way, won't that just kind of happen, and we don't have to really call someone a department chair? No, no, not realistically. I mean, we have such good, hard-working people, and I often say, in six years here, I've never encompassed somebody who I've ever asked to help with something, I would say no. But do we have one person's eyes and talent and expertise on this area? No. Karen's enormously talented, but a fine arts department chair, she is not. So no, no offense. So this would add some cohesion. So when we costed out the position, I would say the lingering issue with the other two committees is this. Conceptually, I think there's agreement that it's needed. Conceptually, there's agreement for it. Where there's been a breakdown has been the cost. So Sherburne School Committee feels as if 5,900 bucks is kind of a tall price to pay. They're not sure if they're going to get the bang for that 5,900 bucks. And that same 5,900 dollar placeholder is, and please, with all due respect, I mean, all of this is included in your budget proposal because we felt like, we've been asked several times, what does administration think and feel and want? So we baked it in, and things come in or out, that's completely within your purview. Sherburne kind of was a little, they, conceptually, I think they're there, financially, they're not. The region, interestingly enough, felt like they should probably own a little bigger piece of it, formulaically, just because of the virtue of the number of people. But you know what's funny about it? If you look at the number of teachers that would be in this department, it would be actually our largest department of any department, even at the high school. This person would have 10 people, which becomes our largest department in the system. Makes sense. You touched three different suggestions, right? But that's bigger than our high school math department at eight, at our high school history department at seven, at the LFTA departments at about six or seven. So you may ask, well, what does this do at the region? At the moment, we have a living fine technical department chair, and it becomes this catch-all. It's like that person, great person, but that person's responsible for industrial arts, for some pre-engineering, for foods, for everything, music and performing arts is responsible for visual arts. It's this hodgepodge. So the idea was rip these two apart and solidly have technology and engineering, have this new, have a department chair. It'll be the second at the region, it'll be a 6 through 12. This has nothing financially to do with Chicaring. I would argue everything to do with kids and the quality of the program moving forward. We have a department chair of technology and engineering, so it would allow that person at the moment who's in position, who's probably-
So coordinator, not a chair, because we're not making him a full chair, right?
I'm sorry?
They're more of the coordinator, not a chair, though, right? They're a lower-
They would have the same, they would have the same structure as a chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that, and what that does, it adds this fine arts department chair, that anyone could apply. Any fine arts teacher, a system-wide could apply, could be the person, one of the two people that hold the positions, that hold teaching position at Pine Hill, could be one of the three, and Chicaring.
So just sort of to, let's say, the art teacher at Chicaring applied and was appointed.
Yeah.
Now, our art teacher is 1.0, right? That position's 1.0. So if this person then had a point two release time,
Yep.
we now have a point two art position to fill.
Yes, with no budget implication, though, because the chair of Super here.
But we've got to find so much to do that.
Yes.
Is that recently?
Could be done. We had a very talented president, Kelly Greenbaum, if you guys know, who was shuffled around in different positions.
And then, you know, I'm going to speak old-school Dover. So what's that mean for our independence, you know, to have? On the one hand, it's great to have the regionalizing. On the other hand, you know, if Sherburne says, we love doing X, we've always done X, and Dover says, well, we really love doing X, we think it's fundamentally important because we really like it.
We already faced that, so when we developed the music curriculum, it's like, no, it's a good question.
Does that kind of, do people get to still, I mean, you know, we are separate schools, we get to stay on our own.
Right. So the pedagogical approach with respect to the performing, to music, when we sat down, came at that, came to that exercise with very different approaches, very different, from Chicaring and from Pine Hill. Took us a while to reconcile what that would look like, and then how do we respect that autonomy, but also ensure that students after grade five have had fundamentally the same music experience? And the teachers felt very respected through that process. There was no autonomy lost, there was nothing like, all it did, among many other things, was it added a level of fidelity to what that K-5 music experience looked like for kids. So that there was not this, a gap, for lack of a better term, you know, going into sixth grade. So we're pretty excited about it. FOPA, the Friends of the Performing Arts, they're very excited about it. And I thought we would probably have a couple of FOPA people here to chat up the position. They've been, it's been discussed with them very, very informally, because they fully appreciate that it needs to go through school committees. But I think, Lauren, you've, you know, I don't know, you've had some exposure, obviously, with the arts.
Oh, I mean, I think it's, it is a financial hurdle, but I think it would be an enhancement to the program. And I agree, I think that the arts here is exceptional, and I think it's a distinguishing factor in our district. So if we can make the numbers work in the budget, that would be important.
So I think it's getting to a point where all three are comfortable with the numbers. So I think the concept definitely is on everyone's approval list, and I think Steve will work and decide where they can make the numbers acceptable to all.
Are you going to see?
Yep, yep. Okay, so we're good on that. You can come back to us on where you end up with the findings.
Right. Thank you.
So I want to make sure we take our important votes before people have to leave. But the one thing I want to go over before is, because it touches a little bit on the operating budget, is I want to go to the capital budget for technology and just walk through the changes that were made since we looked at this in October.
So we looked at the new sheet, right?
The new sheet. This is probably.
New sheet that was given to us today?
Yes.
Yes.
You have everything in the binder that was about technology? I don't think you had it in the binder, it was left out. So that's, you don't have anything else. This is building facilities.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah. So go back to where the, okay, take out this and put all that in.
Thank you.
Because you have a new technology supplement planned, too. So just the, so when we, when we talked in October, no, we talked in November. When we had that special meeting in November, we were talking with Capitol and Warren about technology and how we get approaches from both a Capitol and an operating standpoint. And so two of the things that were originally on this list were the projector replacements and some switches for the hardware. When we met with Capitol in November, they did agree with those seen more like in the operating realm. So that's the 14,000 that you saw in- So that's the 14,000 that you saw in the talking points that was added to the operating budget for technology. So therefore on a capital side, we have left replacing the laptop cart with Chromebooks and eight additional laptops for teachers in the school that come up with the 19,075. So that's our new number that we are moving forward to approve for our technology capital request. In addition, we had further discussions with capital about now that we're sort of set up with this new device deployment, that we're pretty much set on, you know, all the classrooms, all the grades have sort of the configuration that we think we're going to do moving forward. And the cost of those devices have come down so much from when we used to buy desktops, so they're almost now more like supplies. So if we have their approval, if we would like to not put replacement costs for the current deployment that we have in capital, but build it into our operating starting in fiscal year 17. So we left the placeholders in this version, but what I'd like to ask is that we then, as, as we're sitting here today, for 17, 18, 19, 20, we actually don't put a placeholder because we're assuming that for the next four years, we're sort of set in how deployment. If we change our minds and there is something new we want to add, that would go to capital because we'd get that approval. But if we stay with what we have now and just do replacements, they're comfortable with us not having that as capital.
Now, is there any problem with the fact that that increases our operating costs, that brings down our capital? But is it, that all comes together in the final bottom line?
Well, it's all-
Yeah. Basically, the budget would have been even, would have been decreasing even further if not for this 14,000.
Okay. Right. But if we're going to move like the 20,000 of replacement into our budget, that this is our budget.
Yes.
But it all, but the bottom line is all, the school committee budget.
It is, but we did have the operating understanding that if there was a new platform or something that was significant, that we would have to go through the process.
Yeah, okay.
We also discussed coming up with sort of a technology cost per student that would drive our replacement cost. So we will, you know, administration, Anthony will look into doing that, developing what on an annual basis are the costs of technology so that we have a formula that we would use and that would give the town comfort that we are spending it based on our enrollment.
So that would be like replacing the whiteboards and-
The mini iPads, the-
Right.
The Chromebooks, yeah.
Yep, okay.
We will hold off until Lauren gets back.
Hi, Don. Thanks. I understand that the revised technology hardware capital request is the little mobile Chromebooks and the HHP Probook. But going back to November, I had the Cisco switches at 4,150 and the 3M, replacing the 3M projectors at 10,000. And then if I look at in district, education, talking point 14, it says 14,375. So there's a difference of, what I had in November was 14,150 for those two items and here it says 14,375. So I'm just curious if there's something else being added.
No, you know what that number was and that's just, you know, when they pulled this together, that was a small piece. That actually was the number that we had initially pulled off with the request. I don't, I think we would have been better off just saying like it's going to be 15,000. So it's not, those are just sort of estimates. So we've increased, and there's already some money in the technology budget anyway, so that's really just an estimate increase that they threw there. It's not like to the, we weren't trying to be to the penny. It was a couple, coming from a couple of-
It could be my keyboards, I ended up stuff that will-
Okay.
I understand.
You represent this to the Warren Committee.
Yeah.
Capital budget, so that's why.
And I, and I think way in the next iteration, I would actually probably say we'll just round that up to 15,000 to make it easier so it's not tied-
To anything.
-to particular items because that's not the, I mean, because on the projector side too, most likely we're going to end up having to approve a couple of those this year if they break. But that's sort of a number that I think that the Director of Technology was comfortable with as to what he foresaw. So we'll clean that up so it's not quite so confusing.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. So Lauren, we just sort of went through the capital and, you know, we made some changes, but the biggest thing is we also discussed going forward not having placeholders right now because of incorporating into our operating budget.
Right.
Because of the nature of technology right now.
Which you reflected in this past, right?
Yeah.
Put 15 or something.
Yes, yes. And then, but then going forward, saying fiscal year 17, we're not going to put a placeholder in capital because we're going to embed it into operating, any reductions. So that would be fiscal year 17 going forward. So 16, we have a capital and operating. We've taken it and we have two places.
Okay.
You see the 19,075, that's the capital piece that is-
Right, so you've made a distinction in the piece of equipment as to whether it's operating or capital.
Right.
In the past, we called it all capital.
Right.
Now you're doing step one, some of it's capital, some of it's operating. Next year, all of it's operating.
Yes. Got you. Okay. So we do need to take a vote on this new capital proposal.
We vote on this every time we get together, don't we?
We do, but this is the final vote. And, but I will say on your amended, that 2017, 18, 19, and 20 will have zero placeholders as we're going to present it for this year. And that can change if things come up, Lauren, like you said, if there's any major change that we do in technology, it has to go before capital. We keep our current deployment and we're just replacing, they're fine with us doing it in operating.
Okay. So do we need a motion on this? I move that we approve yet again, the new capital budget for 2016.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, going back to the budgets, were there any other questions, concerns, comments that you have on the budget that we should not hit upon already that we can sort of document before we take a vote on that number or submit to the town?
I think what electricity, there was a comment that it was a pretty steep increase. I want to say it was like 17%. Later on, there were the instructions from Warren's and they're suggesting it's 1.7%. So what, what's the difference?
Wait, our guidance letter went out before the electric utilities announced that there was going to be this huge increase. And we're dealing with it on a department by department basis.
Okay. Excellent. Just, is it a big question of looking at solar in this building going forward, whether it's not something we're going to tackle this year, but just have it in our, is that something, is that number we need to manage? Is it big enough in our operating budget that it's a concern?
Eventually.
Yeah, one of the things that's driving this increase though, it's probably not going to be a permanent adjustment, it's the market, it's just the infrastructure in New England. And there's been effort, you know, to run additional infrastructure, but that's been vetoed by the governor of Massachusetts, Vermont. So there, there's a lot of politics involved as far as getting these rates down. It's really only particular to New England, these increases.
But that, that topic of solar did, has come up, it's come up in the other buildings too.
So, so this is a driver in all three budgets, this electricity increase?
Oh, yes.
And is that something that Warren, if that was some concern to the, you know, to bring, to manage the electrical costs for the town, is that, is that really drawn to something like?
They probably Warren.
Are you asking about solar or just the increase in the budget?
Well, just managing, like the, you know, we only have a couple, the heat, the electricity and the, and the water are big. And that seems to be a pretty big number this year. So I guess, is it on your radar?
It's absolutely on our radar. And what, what we're doing is we're looking at each department's budgets, seeing what their actuals were and what they're requesting and seeing if there's any way that the department can factor in any excess money that would ordinarily be turned back to the town to pay for the increase in utilities. So it would just be the school committee, cemetery commission, highway, every other town department.
Okay. Do you know what the delta number is of the what, how much that's driving a budget increase?
Well, right now we're paying 0.775 per kilowatt hour. That's going to 11 cents.
Okay.
That's, I believe a 51%.
It's a big jump.
No, it's a huge, I'm guessing in dollars.
Oh, for the total?
How much to the bottom line is that adding to the budget of the last year? I'm sure it's in, I just-
Yeah, it's-
I'm confused.
It's on page three. It's $20,000 of the 307 barrels.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but your regular in districts would have been more like 100, a decrease of 100,000.
Okay, we had to shut up. Yeah. I'll just mention that I probably would like to look, discuss not budgeting all five of our early retirements. That's, that's been a placeholder of $25,000 in the budget. I think it's probably unlikely that we have five teachers in one year.
Oh, I thought that that was an, that had nothing to do with retirement. I thought you hit a year amount.
No, no, no. So the new contract has a new option.
Oh, so people have to ask for this. I just thought these were five people stepped up and said-
This, this is all, and this is all based on what the contract says, who we on the hook for.
Oh, okay, so these are potential.
No.
Okay.
Oh, God, five million.
So that's where I think where we're looking at because that, that could, you know, to hold that placeholder for all that money if we're looking for other things is, I have the recommendation not to have five placeholders for five teachers retiring next year because I think that's highly unlikely. So that is a potential place where we would do a little trimming of the budget.
Are the other ones just milestone bonuses?
The other ones, the other ones are, yeah.
Yeah, right. And the other two school committees are struggling with the same issue with, because there's a, there's that $25,000 placeholder in each elementary budget and then there's a $50,000 placeholder in the regional budget. It's five for each of the two buildings. So to each town, it's reflective of a $50,000 placeholder for retirements that are probably very unlikely. Certainly unlikely in that, in that volume.
Okay. We didn't talk about the accept transportation contract.
Right.
And so in the budget, does that reflect the new rates or the old rates?
The old, the old.
Now, is the D1 that gets across this Warren?
It, it, it could go up, it could go down marginally. So Terry, do you want to jump in on that?
Yes, so I can, I can do a quick tutorial on what they used for a formula to determine this and give you in general terms. Audrey Moran, the outer district coordinator, has done a lot of work to help us figure out what this means for us for the upcoming year. But what they basically did is right now we do a per mile payment for our transportation and they are now giving students a factor number. So your factor one, if you're transported within your town, you know, so a student living in the town of Dover being transported to Chickering for some reason is a one, if you're being transported to a collaborative program, you're a two. Anyone going to any other programs, it's based on how far. So 10 miles is a three and-
Three and a half. Thirty miles is four.
Yes, so, yeah. So they go three and a half and four points. So they assign a student points and then they take your district and they figure out how many students fit into each of those categories. So I did a sample one for you and you have a packet?
It's in the, it's in your red packet.
Looks like this on the side in your on packet.
Oh, okay, yes, okay. Yeah, yep, yep, I read that.
So I did just a sample version of this for a district that had students broken out into these different categories.
Yeah.
For a total of 15 students and then what you do is for each number of students in each category, you multiply that out. So you have two students that are a factor four, that's a total of eight points. You have, you know, nine students at 3.5, you multiply that. So the total number of points for this sample is 49.5 points. And then what accept does is they figure out for all of the districts that we do transportation for, here's the total number of points for all of our districts. And then they do a percentage. So in this case, this sample would be 4.12% of all of the points for accept transportation. Then they take their total budget, which I rounded to a number of $5 million, and they figure out what 4.12% of that is. In this case, that comes out to $206,000 and they divide that by the number of students you're, that they're transporting and get a cost per student. So this sample is, it's a, you know, Mr. Bliss and I were talking, but I'm not sure how long it took them to come up with a formula like this, but, but this is the one they're using. So there's a, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things with this. As Steve said, this means our budget could vary from year to year because what they're going to do is they're going to choose a date and that is your snapshot. However many students they are transporting at that time is what you will be billed for for the entire year. You can add to, you don't have any, any increased cost. But again, if you take away, if you have fewer, if you have fewer students being transported than original, you're still paying the original amount.
What's original, I think September, like after the-
So for this year, the date that they chose was November 13th.
Oh, God.
Because I think that's when they got this whole formula finalized and for next year, they're going to use September 14th as their snapshot date. So-
It's been districted.
Lauren.
Sorry, Mrs. Jones. We can't place them until 16th September.
I know.
This doesn't work out.
Yeah, nobody gets transported until then, we'll, you know, we'll drive them ourselves.
Yeah, exactly. Anyway, so once the cost is set, the nice part is it is a solid number for the year. The difficulty is from year to year, some years we're going to be in a good position where we're paying less and other years more. And the other difficult part is that if they choose a date such as September 14th to do the snapshot, we're already in our budget process at that time. And so that's very late for us to be getting those numbers from acceptance. So it might mean that we're having to-
Not September.
September.
November would be.
Please. Sorry, yes, November.
No, it's November. Yeah, they were, I'm sorry, Terry, that was the topic that came up at the board meeting last week when we met and they said, "Does anyone have any concerns?" I said, "Well, aside from understanding that some years will be up and down, I mean, there'll be, that's the spirit of belonging to a collaborative, you know, in some, in some ways you, you benefit and others you may not." But I said that my, one of my largest concerns is that if this is taken snapshot any later in November, it's too late for us. And everyone sort of looked quizzically because no one else is budgeting that early for next year, but we land our first budget Sherborne before Thanksgiving.
So they're projecting September 14th for next year as their snapshot date.
That would be the next year.
I'm not sure at what point, as the district will be notified-
It's like a circuit breaker, it's like 12 months.
What are costs?
Yeah, it wasn't the board vote though.
Oh, it was not.
No, it's November.
That was originally-
November, it was November 1.
So November of this year is what we're going to pay next year, when we know we're going to have, you know, we, we could have six more, whatever your numbers show, we're increasing.
So score for us, score for us.
Yes. If you have a year when you're going up, then you could win.
Right, so it's a week.
It's all going to come out. What about that one very expensive case where, you know, I don't want to have to pay, is that an accept transportation? Isn't there one that's like really far away and it could be in the 20, 21, 22 age? I don't want to be on that.
They just have, they just have the greater than 50 miles as the 4.0. So even if it's 100 miles, 41 to 100 miles.
But it is, it's one of those 50 mile cases.
But your concern is once this, once a student ages out.
I just, I'm concerned about an expensive case where we know they're in the aging out population, that we're going to be on the hook for, is it two years?
No.
We're going to be, no, because they're, they're in that, let's say he's 22. We're going to be, no, because they're in, that, let's say he's twenty-two, so I'm paying for him next year when he's twenty, oh, I guess it's one year, so next year he's twenty-three.
Your exposure's one year.
Right. Is that much of an exposure or no?
Well, I mean, you know, in the whole, because we're a relatively small percentage, I mean, it doesn't look like it in our numbers, but it was interesting because of all the board members, Steve, Dr. Scott, Stacy Scott from Framingham, he has the greatest stake in this transaction, so when the vote came up, he came to the meeting a little bit late, and it was, I mean, he's, he's got the biggest horse in the race in terms of the number, Framingham is great in fifty percent of the Accept contract.
So what, in comparison to what we, if we've added the mileage, where are we?
Right, so what Audrey Moran did for us, because the other variable to this is, these costs are September to June only, they do not include summer transportation. That is going to be calculated at the old cost per mile rate, because it's too variable for Accept to include in these numbers. So what Audrey Moran had to do for us is, given the formula, she figured out what the cost per child was going to be, they actually provided that. She had to go in for all of our students who participated in summer programs and do the per mileage cost for those students. I can only tell you for next year, beyond that, I cannot, next year, it is a savings. So the cost overall for us is in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars less than...
So we'll have that number for the next budget.
Correct.
Yes.
Which is nice, because you said it, and again, if new students need to be transported, you don't have to worry about adding that cost in, but there will be years where we're going to pay more than we would have if we'd done the per mileage, per mile cost.
Paying the snowplow by winter, by snowfall, some years you score, some years you don't, and it kind of washes out.
I will see, four years, and maybe back to the mileage.
We'll see. Where we have six kids going to Nishova, I'm making up numbers, but six kids going to Route Nine in Southboro, wherever that is, we pay six times a per, I mean, I know it's not mileage anymore, but, so there's no, there's savings there.
No cost there.
And we know that this is a better model for us than somehow figuring it out ourselves.
Doing our own transportation.
Figuring out how to do it ourselves.
There's, that's quite a task.
There's a reason why it's collaborative.
I worked previously as an administrator in a district that had its own transportation model, they hired a transportation coordinator, you know, but there's a lot involved between figuring out the number of vehicles, students have to be transported within an hour unless the program that they're attending is more than an hour away, they're supposed to be transported within an hour, so you have to coordinate which students picked up when and taken where. If new students are sent out of district, you have to figure out sometimes all the routes for students, so you have, you know, the cost of vehicles, the cost of drivers, you have to have substitute drivers, because if you have more than one vehicle going, you could possibly have more than one person out ill, you have to have substitutes, you have to have insurance, and you deal with, I have a lot of respect for the person that coordinates Accept's transportation, and the number of parents' phone calls that she deals with because of traffic, weather issues, students being held up for long periods, things like that. So it's all things, because I'm not saying we should not look at that, but it is a big undertaking.
One other topic, Lauren, to your point that came up, was the acceptance of new school districts into the Accept Collaborative, so that was one of our topics last week, and the single greatest driver of districts looking to join Accept is either its discontent around their in-house transportation model or their current external model, and a desire both financially and qualitatively to get in with Accept, so we had this lengthy discussion last Thursday about, we may probationally accept other districts into the Accept Collaborative, with the understanding that you will not have a transportation benefit for your first three years. So we may accept you as a new district and say, but you won't have all the rights, benefits, and privileges of the collaborative model, because it's seen that that's one of the driving factors to why districts want in. So that, you have to think there's a little bit of, I'm sure, or a lot of homework going on behind some of those.
And having dealt with them, I can say the quality is very good, they are extremely responsive, their drivers are very professional, very friendly, yeah, more like the same thing, they're reliable.
What I'd like us to do before we have to lose anyone is to take a vote on the total budget that we'll submit to the town, and if you have any other little comments, just pass them along, because we'd hope to address those in January, again, if they have any action.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
The point of the POS system for the cafeteria is not in this capital request, is that, has that been considered as funding for next year?
I think that is still coming up through, do we have the folk, you in the meeting with the focus group?
It's part of Janelle's action plan that was presented to the three school committees in October, I don't know that any action has been taken since then.
I think she's deferred that, not for next year, in her plan.
No, I think, I think she does need it for next year.
So we'll have that in our clarifying, Karen and I were supposed to meet on that action plan yesterday, and we had a bunch of meetings that ran overtime, so we'll meet before the next time, so there are some adjustments that, we'll have like revised talking points, right, so if the decision is, we'll deplete or deflate the retirement incentive line a little bit from the twenty-five thousand, the POS system might be included, so we'll have those little ins and outs.
So a couple more like that, or say, if that, the students, to the extent, you know, we go with an outside and have a fee on that, if that's in and out of the budget, the qualified peer borrowers and the cost of running that. This is really minor, and it's also old, but DS Community Ed is now in this building, do we get rent, a stipend from them?
Not at the moment, but they also haven't really paid rent when they were in the admin building, so it's kind of an internal collaborative.
Oh, they didn't?
No.
Their house is part of it, wherever.
Good thinking.
I don't know where, we're talking to all...
That's where I'm talking about creating, I'm not moving to your car.
I think it's just, that gets to the point where it just shifts from one, like, from one count over to, I mean, we might be picked up from Sherburne, but in the total thick of the thing, it's all the same.
It couldn't be much money, I just...
If you think anything else, just email to me and I'll pass it along to administration. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the fiscal year sixteen budget, this is both in district and out of district, of nine million eight hundred and seventeen dollars, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So...
Second. Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Perfect, we have something to send to the town.
Thank you, everybody. And I'll also say, and I'll speak for myself, but I think that's a very big, we understand that there are going to be reductions in staff, and that's hard, and it's, you know, we don't do that lightly, but we also can't, that's the downfall of school, it's not like a business where you can say, you're awesome, we're going to do this new project for you. We don't do some kids, go out and talk to those realtors. Muffins, if they bring in the kindergarteners.
Before we adjourn, just quickly can we do the consent agenda so that we can clarify that? So you have minutes of ten twenty-eight, November sixth, and then the other two school committees, I believe, have, this was, came from MASC, have voted to select MASC to be the arbitrator.
Right, so...
Instances where...
In instances where a grievance is unable to be settled and the school committee needs to engage an arbitrator, then they, by statute, the school committee can ask MASC to serve preliminarily as an arbitrator on your behalf, and so MASC is your representative body, has suggested that you take a vote to in fact do that, not that there's anything out there.
But so it's on the record.
So it's on the record. So Sherburne has taken the vote, the region will take its vote January sixth, and Dover were asking to vote today, if it's your will, if it's your pleasure.
So we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, items one and two.
Does that include the minutes?
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay. Which ones, the...
Well, it's kind of because of the capital from the October meeting that we then fixed in the November meeting, is it all wiped clean because of...
Yeah, we decided that we just...
That we just voted a new number, so that's, because the detail of all that wasn't really shared in minutes, is that...
Of the, well, right, of the discussion between, right, so I think the minutes, did we, well, it was made a point that we clarified the use of the capital, without going into too much detail, just...
I'm fixated on my vote, it was an error on October twenty-eighth, it's in the minutes, and there's no reversal of that vote.
So we did get counsel, and they said we didn't probably need to reverse that, like, we just moved forward by, you know, correcting it. Another, is that it? Okay, okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Right.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, just to skip back up, were there any, were there any questions on the central office or... There's a lot of information in there, and we didn't want to hold it till January, because it would all put me off.
I know.
It all looks good.
Just please pay attention on the school start times information, it'd be really important to school committees.
How's the feedback, are you getting good return on questionnaires?
Right, so we have all the survey responses, we had a chairs meeting yesterday, a chairs meeting of the three focus groups that comprise that larger group, and we had a stronger than fifty percent response rate from all respondent pools.
Even the elementary schools, because that was...
Yeah, I think we're like forty-eight percent.
Wow, that's fabulous, because isn't it like near thirty to get statistically, that's great.
And I'm doing the circuit, so I met with Dover PTO last week, Pine Hill CSA, I met with Positive at the middle school, in early January, I met with high school PTO, the committee next meets on January the fifth, the day we're back, that committee as a whole meets. The census, the survey responses are embargoed to those nineteen committee members, it's, the information should be provided today to a secure Google Drive for their access, and with the notion they'll spend the next couple of weeks reviewing that, and I've had a preliminary conversation with the owner of the bus company to discuss potential options, he was extremely helpful in looking at, so we'll see you on January fifth, you'll have the survey results as a committee member, but mum's the word.
Glad you told me that. And I just want to point out that in your packet is the November thirtieth status of appropriations, because I think the only updates were, not a lot of updates, actually.
No, just a special ed.
Which is probably not fully reflected in here, right?
Yeah, I didn't think it was, because the numbers aren't as big as what you're talking about.
No, there are some purchase orders, that's correct.
Because we don't have, we don't see the whole negative variance here yet.
This is actually what's in the system, Audrey actually does, you know, the changes.
Can I just bring up a quick topic on the food services based on the advocate meeting that we had last week, and just to kind of bring it to the attention of the Dover School Committee, because we do discuss this probably more at the joint level when we have all the districts together, but an interesting comment that, or outcome of that was the identification that capital needs for our food services is not something that as a school committee we ever talk about, and it's because it's operated outside of our operating budget, and so we don't talk about those things. And we have the benefit of being in a building that's only twelve or fourteen years old, so we've really, we haven't hit it as an issue, but we have equipment that has now reached its end of life, and so it's not in what we're talking about for this fiscal budget, but I think we need to get it on the table and start talking about it, so that it could be on something that we're talking about for next year when we're setting the budget. I don't know how we do that, I don't know where it goes.
Yeah, we already have a placeholder on notes.
Yeah, exactly, so I just wanted to bring it up to the committee, to the extent that on the voice piece of what I'm hearing in the subcommittee, that it is something that we ought to be speaking about in the coming, you know, twenty-four months, and part of, the first part of having that conversation is collectively as a district, K through twelve, that we come together and define who it is we want to be as a food service, and it kind of comes under the umbrella of the wellness, but it really, it's a cultural thing that needs to be reconciled between Dover, Sherburne, and the region, and once that's defined, that will then define what the capital needs are going forward. But as a smaller, less expensive outcrop of that was the recognition that the POS system is fundamentally not working, and that it has fiscal consequences to the extent we can't do our job to, you know, operate the food services from a financial standpoint, and so that is something that I would like to see, you know, discussed and properly, and decide where, in what fiscal year it ought to be funded.
Right, and part of that also is the notion, there was a lot in the advocate report around the financial end of the food service operation, in the advent of the fact that we'll have a new business manager installed over the summer, that also will be, and we have the business manager task force at play too, would be the idea that if there's some paradigm shift with how we're managing the financials behind food service, that may well be something we want to look at in that broader construct of the business office, and that has come up, and we actually moved into our mind. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the report, questions? Okay, so otherwise, we will adjourn, hopefully everyone has a wonderful holiday, and we will reconvene in January, but again, if you come up with any other questions on the budget, please pass it along, because we will then have another revision in January. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.